Morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is Saturday, September the 15th, 2012. It is 11 o'clock. This is a meeting of the -- a special meeting of the Board of Directors. I'm going to call on our Secretary Frances for a roll call. Madam Secretary, roll.
Charles Smith-Patrick.
Here.
Marvin Towne.
Here.
Frances Meschero here. Mark Richman.
Here.
Thank you.
Margaret Cosman.
Here.
Gerald Miro is absent. Sharon Fupiceon?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, we -- yes.
We've established a quorum, and I just like to make a little announcement, that I have, if anybody would care to look at it, an affidavit that the notice of this meeting was mailed out 15 days before the date of the meeting, which complies with the 14-day mailing rule. It has been duly notarized.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are going to move on to the vote for the special assessment.
Sharon on the phone?
No, he isn't.
And I will call for a motion to vote on the special assessment.
I call for a motion for a vote on the special assessment as noticed and presented.
We can hear you. Speak up. Speak up.
Why does the motion ask somebody to approve or just...
I call for a motion to approve the special assessment as noticed and presented.
Before we move to a vote, I'd like to open the subject for discussion amongst the Board members online. Do -- sorry, do we have a second there? Collette, seconds the motion? Yeah, thank you. Before we go to a vote, Madam Secretary, I'm going to open the table, the floor, to the Board of Directors for any comments. Before I pass the mic on to other members, I'd like to ask Jason Levy a question. Jason, we're voting today on the special assessment. As you know, there's a Part One and a Part Two. Can the Board separate Part One and Part Two and vote accordingly?
Okay, that's a good question. In this particular case, the notice has been out. You followed the proper protocol by the Florida statute by giving the 14-day notice. In that 14-day notice, you do have a full package. That full package has a Part One and Part Two. However, the Part Two is connected to the Part One because of a down payment for Part Two. So you must vote yea or nay on this presented package.
Thank you. I will now call on Marvin. I'm just gonna --
Yeah, we lost you, did we? Okay, I'm gonna put you back on speaker. Hold on.
I'm just gonna make a brief comment. There's two parts to the special assessment. The first is the cash infusion. The purpose is essentially to fund the operations through January and to replenish the insurance settlement fund, which was designated for capital projects. It also provides a source for emergency funds. Running a $3 million press enterprise that we have here without something in reserve is irresponsible, in my view. So this infusion provides for some of that, and it also pays for the deposit for the projects. As far as the project is concerned, we're in the process of the 40-year certification. And once that inspection report is presented to the association, which may be by the end of this month or early October, we'll have a more complete picture of what the association needs to do. We'll review the necessary capital projects at that time. We'll research available financing options. I anticipate we will be redoing Part Two at that point. We will renotice and vote again on the project's part of the special assessment. Now, the cash infusion gives us the time to complete this reevaluation for the projects, and we'll also be reevaluating our finance options. So I see absolutely no choice now but to approve the special assessment as noticed.
Thank you, Marvin. Sharon, do you have any comments or...
I just have one question. The question is... So what you're saying is the second part can be revised after we reevaluate our financial...
Give the microphone, Sharon.
Second part, can we revise, even though we're gonna vote today on the entire package, can we revise the second portion of it?
As I understand it, any special assessment, this one included, the moment we pass it, the Board can elect to revisit any part of it and renotice a new special assessment or place to do anything. In this particular case, the simple answer is yes. We're going to vote for this special assessment, assuming we vote to approve. Once that's done, starting one hour from now, we can start reconsidering other options. But bottom line is, with the cash infusion and with this 40-year certification report coming down the line, we're gonna have a very -- much more complete report of what the entire village needs in terms of capital projects. And we'll be able to make that evaluation, research other financing operation -- options, and then have a more complete projects picture at the end of the process.
Excuse me. I'm gonna -- Frances, do you have a comment? Go ahead, Derek.
No, I just wanted to mention to Sharon and to the audience, please, that what we have no option on is the cash infusion that is necessary to pay our bills.
Can she repeat again?
Who? Frances, Frances, can you repeat what she said?
In Sharon acknowledging that she understood what Marvin said about revisiting the -- our options, we have no option to revisit the cash infusion portion of the assessment, the monies that are due now and being paid over a period of four months. Because without that cash infusion, we absolutely cannot pay our bills.
Thank you, Frances. We are now going to move on to the actual vote. Are there any objections to the acceptance of the special assessment? Any objections?
Are you asking us?
Yes.
Yeah, all of us.
We're voting on the special assessment.
That's correct. That's correct. The Board.
There are any objections? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mark. It's finished. Thank you, Mark.
Before I call for an adjournment, I -- Jerry is not here, and we needed -- we needed -- he asked me to make a comment on his behalf. Yeah, sir, please put your hand down. Thank you. Jerry, if Jerry was here, he would vote not for this special assessment. He would vote against the special assessment. His position was to minimize Part One, to cover the deficit, and maximize Part Two. In other words, bring the dollar amount for the next four months down, but increase it substantially over the next 36 months. To cover both the mandatory and the desire of projects that will protect and enhance the community. That is his comments. Just give me a second, please. Ladies and gentlemen, we've spent three weeks now discussing all aspects of this. And the Board, as hurtful as the special assessment is, it has been voted on, it is passed. However, we have heard your comments, and the Board is going to, after we have a thorough 40-year certification study, engineering study, we will revisit all the projects that were mentioned on the second part of the assessment. So we will look again at what needs to be done, what absolutely needs to be done, and what cannot be done, and we will notice all our membership. Thank you for coming this morning. Goodbye. May I have a motion, please, from the adjournment?
No, I make motions from adjournments.
Do I have a second there? Marvin, seconds. Meeting adjourned.
No, no, no!
No, there's been meetings.
We don't have time.
There's been...
Let me just make a comment here. Okay, let me make a comment here. I'm unwilling to...
So everybody else.
I'm unwilling to stay here and discuss any aspect of the special assessment with anybody.
Sir, we had a meeting on Monday, and you could publicly discuss it.
No, no, no.
It was up in the buildings. All of our meetings are noticed.
So what's the point of this meeting if people are here?
Point of the meeting, when you want a meeting, you vote on it.
Ladies and gentlemen, go ahead, Collette. Ladies and gentlemen, let's make something real clear here. There are some people here in the audience that are shocked that you've come to this meeting and we made the vote. Not all -- this, we've had two board meetings that we've discussed the special assessment, and on top of that, we had a town hall meeting where we had over 100 of our members here to discuss this. Everyone got noticed exactly the same way. Is this hurtful? Yes, and we've told you it's hurtful, but we have no choice. I own three properties here, or will own shortly three properties here, and I will tell you something. I am not going to stand around and have those properties worthless. Worthless. So this is, we had to take tough decision, and that's the way it is. Marvin?
Community votes on what can be done and what cannot be done, also. Don't we have a vote of anything?
Uh, I could answer that. As far as choosing...
I don't vote for them.
Okay, you made a mistake.
Don't they have a vote on anything?
In this particular instance, okay, this is a duty of the Board to preserve the welfare of the community. It is not a matter that calls for a membership vote as an amendment to the condo docs would. The Board has presented it to the membership over and over again, and we've heard comments, and we've taken everything into consideration. And the bottom line is that if we do not have this infusion of funds, we are going to face bankruptcy, and nobody here would benefit.
I'd like to make a comment to put some of this in perspective.
Please, please, can we have some -- if you want your questions answered, then when one of the Board members is speaking, have him given the courtesy of answering the questions. Thank you.
Okay. To put things in a little perspective here, during the Democratic National Convention, the former President Clinton made an interesting comment, and that's keep everything as simple as possible, look at the arithmetic. And in our case, starting in 2007, and that's 2007, '08, '09, '10, '11, six years, our elected representatives, the people who we put as the Board of Directors, have for six years voted not to have an increase in maintenance. And each time that vote was done, you know, everybody thought, most people thought it was a good idea. Very few people said, "No, it's not a good idea." Had that been done, just that simple 5% increase over the last six years, we would not be in this situation. We would be financially whole. But we did not do that, and now we have to pay the piper. It's that simple. The only alternative to not getting this cash infusion is going bankrupt. There is no other possibility that I'm aware of. And I am not, personally, I'm not willing to see the value of my property go down to almost nothing and to see the quality of life, what I know as the village and all the amenities and everything else, go away. I am unwilling to allow that to happen.
I have a question. What happens if you're a homeowner trying to sell your condominium unit?
I'll repeat the question.
What happens if you're a condominium unit owner and trying to sell your property, proposing to pay hopefully some kind of in the next month? How does the special assessment affect someone like that with regard to the part two of the tax that was passed today? Are you gonna...
The question is, if somebody is at the moment trying to sell their unit, how does this special, how does the passing of this special assessment affect that sale? The best answer is speak to your attorney.
I would like to hear from Mr. Coffin. Mr. Coffin, please stand.
Unfortunately, all real estate contracts provide that the assessment must be paid in full before closing. It's as simple as that.
Unless, of course, it's forgiven.
Sure.
The other thing is that we're facing this association, ladies and gentlemen, is that for years and years prior to this year, in the middle of last year, very little was done by past administrations for collection of bad debt. Today, we are facing with 157 non-paying units. And all of us that are in good standing, whether it is good or bad because we live in a condominium society, we are responsible for that debt. We pay for the non-payers. Although we have done every single one of the delinquent owners, 157, I are either at the attorneys at the present time or at a collection, in collections. We're doing our best, but it's a very slow process. Yes, ma'am, please stand up. Can you give her the mic? Thank you.
A couple of things. What's being done? Are you willing to foreclose on units that don't pay their international village responsibilities? That includes monthly maintenance and any assessments? Is International Village willing to foreclose?
Could I answer that before you get to your next question? This administration has made it a very high priority to do whatever we need to do with non-paying units. As of, excuse me, gentlemen, how many units do we totally have? We totally, right now, we have five units that we have taken title to.
More than 30 now are in...
Right, and we're expecting between 25 and 30 new ones that we will have title to before the end of the year, that we will be able to rent out and recover some of our monies. This has never been done before in the village, and unfortunately, the legal process, as you well know, takes a while to grind through the full cycle. However, the last meeting with the attorney, which was on Tuesday, he assured us that there are approximately 30 in the middle right now, and out of the 30, approximately 25 will become titled units that we will be renting.
My second question.
Yes.
I'll make it quick. What about the people who, the owners in here who are on a fixed income? Will you address that? Will you comment on that?
You know, I said right from the very beginning, weeks and weeks ago when we started talking about the special assessment, that this is gonna be hurtful for people that are on fixed income. In fact, I have a member of our Board who is and has been part of this team and is on fixed income, and it's gonna hurt them. There's absolutely no doubt about it. What we have done to minimize maybe, this is a small, just a small thing, but could be helpful, is that if you have a credit card and you're in good standing with your credit card company, we are going to accept the first four months of the cash infusion Part One on your credit card. That way, we will get our money, and at the same time, some of our fixed income or less capable individuals can finance it through their credit card over a long period of time, a longer period of time. And, you know, I wish, all of us wish, that we could have taken the four months that we're asking you to really come up with that big cash infusion, wish that we could have done it over a long period of time. We had no choice. There was no option for us. No one wanted to finance it. We couldn't borrow. No bank. Sharon? Sharon is our banking expert. She is with what bank? No, she's not gonna say. However, we have approached banks, and banks will not lend to condominium societies that have a delinquency rate of 5% or more. Is that correct, Sharon? So we did go to every possible lending institution to find out if we could borrow the money, and we were flatly turned down because of our delinquency. And unfortunately, it's people like myself and you folks out here that have to dig deep into your pockets to save us all, because without your participation, and I heard from many of you this week, I'm not paying, and I can't stop you from paying. But we will need that money, and if you decide not to pay, then we will have no choice but to file for bankruptcy. That's the bottom line, as hurtful as that may be. Sir, you've had your hand up for a long time.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have speed bumps in here? Now, we are almost in bankruptcy, and the speed bumps, excuse me, speed bumps are horrible ideal. I worked for the fire department. I did it for 25 years here. I was here when this building burned down and when the Idowell building burned down. The speed bumps only slow us down. For one, for the fire trucks, it tears up the equipment. Two, if you're a medical patient, you break a hip, and you gotta go over a speed bump, it is extremely painful. They're a bad, bad idea.
Thank you. I will tell you this, sir. We have heard the voices of our membership, and like Marvin said at the very beginning, every single project that is not a mandatory 40-year certification will be revisited, rethought of, and we will take your advice into consideration. Let's do a lot more study, and maybe this is not the year to have the speed bumps. Maybe.
You're right. When do we have money?
And maybe this is not the year to have the cameras, and maybe it's not the year to do this signage, okay? And maybe it's not the year that we plant the ficus. Maybe it's not the year that we do the tree trim. However, we have roofs that need to be repaired. I see your hand, sir. I'll come back to you. We have roofs that need to be repaired. We have no choice. We have crumbling balconies. We have no choice. These things are absolute, we have half our residents who are enjoying a higher standard of living than the other half because they live in renovated buildings and others do not. Okay? So, yes, we have heard your voices. We are a responsible Board. We have taken the decision today to pass the assessment because law tells us to do so, and you heard from us, and this is a solemn promise from me as your president, that we are going to revisit every project and reevaluate it. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, we've overtalked and talked and talked and talked about this. And, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Which one of us?
Either one of you.
Okay. I don't need a mic to talk.
That's not a good sign.
I've been paying my maintenance every month on time, my assessment every month on time. My building where I live, I have a leakage in the apartment for the longest time. Every time they say they're gonna take care, I come back, there's still a leakage. So for me to pay an assessment, there's nothing done on the building in Orleans, the floor looks dirty, everything looks so filthy, and it is a tough call for me to come and work very hard to give back money for assessment when there's nothing done on my building.
Okay, ma'am, I think I just addressed that. I said that in the village, we have two classes of residents, ones that live in a completed renovated buildings and half that do not. And I am of the consideration, and I think most of the folks here in the village also agree, that renovating the last six buildings is a mandatory project. Yes, sir. I don't have my glasses up.
I don't know if everybody realizes that the second part, the capital expenditure, is a million three, and out of that, there's a million one that you can't do much about. One is the renovation of the building, which is $380,000. Number two is the fire alarms, that supposedly is $290,000, and I have a question about that. And number three is a balcony, which is as expensive as renovating the six buildings, which is $380,000. Total, a million one out of a million three. So the other $200,000, which is the speed bumps, the focus, that this, that, don't amount to a hell of a lot. Personally, if you reduce by, I don't know, $50,000, it doesn't change the situation for anybody here. So if we discuss focus, speed bumps, a few less cameras, it doesn't amount to very much. You have the renovation of the buildings, you have the balconies, which apparently we have to pay $400,000 to repair, and the fire alarms. And the fire alarm, I don't understand, but a figure of $300,000. If we can save money on that, it'd be great. But to discuss the $5,000 here and the $10,000 there doesn't do much for any of us.
Thank you, sir. The reality is, is that we have many of our members that have come up to every single member of this Board and expressed their principle that if we are in such a financial situation, why do we need unnecessary items? And I think the Board is gonna take that responsibility and rediscover and discuss. All right? Ladies and gentlemen, I am a, yes, ma'am, please. It's very difficult to see on the side, so I apologize.
My concern is how you're going to rent maybe 30 units if you have them, since nobody is being allowed to rent. I no longer, I have been out of the village for about a year. I have been trying to rent my apartment, which I've owned for more than three years, and every time I get somebody, they say it's capped. So if we're capped, and I have paid my assessment on time, all the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I've been my maintenance, every month on time for all the time I've lived here. So right now, I am paying two assess, two HOAs, one here, one somewhere else, and the Board isn't letting me rent my apartment, so I am at any rate, already operating at a loss, and yet I am faithful to my HOA because I own the apartment, and I understand the concerns. So how are you going to rent 30 if you have people like...
Thank you. We understand the question, and I'm gonna ask our property manager, Jason Levy, to answer that. I know the answer, and Frances knows the answer, but I would like to have a non-Board member answer that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. It's a very good question that you had there. The condo docs provide... The condo docs provide that when a, that the association, and I will explain it, the association is exempt from that. The reason for the association being exempt from that is to protect the association for this reason. If the association needs to take a foreclosure, needs to foreclose because the money is not coming in, the maintenance is not coming in, then the, when it's foreclosed upon, there's no cap for that association because you need the money. If it's not rented, it's just gonna be assessed. So it is, so the condo docs provide for that. Does that answer your question?
So it means that as long as we have this situation in perpetuity, I cannot rent my apartment if I wanted to?
Correct.
Correct, if, if it's, if the twenty-five percent is exceeded.
Yes, sir.
Was raised before about the foreclosures that are in process and the foreclosures that might be happening, but with people not paying their maintenance, has the lawyers of the association and the, and the board process leans against the approximately twenty percent of the units here that I understand that are behind on their maintenance?
Sir, all, all, all the units, I, I, it's my understanding, that do not come in and make financial arrangements either with us or with our attorneys, they, the only way to take possession is to lean the, the unit.
First course of action is the lean.
Say answer, yes, thirty have already been filed.
Great, okay. Because the only way that you're gonna come, or we're gonna come out of this situation is for a strong board, a strong lawyer, for the people that are paying their monies every single month. You might take, we might take a hit in the, in the first few months, but in the long run, everyone here will be better off for it, and that lawyer better be very, very clear and very, very, very strong. And the board and the association should take over those units, they'll be able to rent them out, and this place will be in better financial condition in the long run. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Thank you. In fact, sir, we are doing exactly that. We have a strong board, and we have a very, very tough lawyer, very tough. Please.
I'd just like to know...
Stand up, um, so your voice can carry.
I'd just like to know how many of the present board members will be continuing as board members because of their tenure on the board? In other words, how many new people will we be voting on?
This year, there are five openings for election. And we'll cross that bridge when we come to. Okay, I'm gonna take a last question, sir.
I don't have a real question.
If you don't have a real question...
I wanna know if you're not included in the cap, if the condo is not included in the cap, if they don't have a problem renting all their units, why should that be included in the counting of the cap? They should be excluded.
They're not counted, they're not counted. Sir, 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 they're not counted.
We have reached twenty-five percent.
Sir, 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 sir.
We haven't reached twenty-five percent without them being included in the cap, is what you're saying? Yes. Does that mean we got about fifty percent? Nobody here will ever be able to rent a unit.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this has been a good turnout, and I really, really appreciate it. Please continue making your suggestions to us. You will be getting notices very shortly, again, asking for your input on the second part of the assessment. Thank you, have a great day. Okay, hold on, John, Jason, go ahead.
I just want everybody to, to understand, after this meeting was adjourned, before they opened, too, everybody needs to understand this because there may be questions about this. After the board passed their vote, they adjourned the board meeting. All of this conversation that happened is not a board meeting, it was their, they were giving respect to, to the membership. Therefore, therefore, this is not in meeting minutes. If you ask for meeting minutes, they stopped once they adjourned the meeting, so the discussion that happened won't be here. I just wanna make sure that people are aware of that, if, should they ask for meeting minutes. Thank you.